All right, that's all.
Start over.
Meeting to order. This is a misnomer. We were having a town retreat. This is actually an all-day budget workshop. If we really wanted to have a retreat in the presses here, we ought to call a three-day town retreat at a fine resort. The first night have cocktails and a rubber chicken dinner and a motivational speaker, and then do about a half a day of work and then go play golf. And then that night have a motivational speaker that would tell us to work smarter, not harder. And then finally, the CEO would say, actually, that's not true. You got to work harder. So we're just here, and this starts our budget planning season. We'll have two more workshops or three as needed after this meeting. The one thing I would like to say that we are streaming this today, so if anyone's watching us, you'll see mostly the reports, the materials there, and not really any shots of the people talking. And with that said, I'd remind everyone when you are speaking or doing a report, please speak into the microphone so anyone that is watching this by way of streaming can hear what is being said. So with that, the next item would be to present and approve the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda as presented? Hearing none, I have a motion to approve the agenda. A second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Signify by saying aye. Thank you. I wanted to say one thing. This is not a town board business meeting where we will be making final decisions. This is a workshop where we'll have a lot of questions and answers and given and take. So the agenda is, to me, very flexible. Once we start having reports, of course, questions from the board and discussion hopefully will ensue. So with that being said, the first item would be financial matters, the mid-year update, and our town manager and our financial director, Josh Ward and Rebecca Schuler, will do this presentation.
Can we get it on full screen, Aiden? Might be a little hard to see there.
Nope, that's mine. Matt, wrong one.
Yeah, Commissioner Hayne wanted to know if we have a copy of that report.
The power report? No.
Would you like this? Okay, what I was gonna say, you could relocate possibly where you could see it. There you go.
Here we go. So what I wanted to do today is give an update on where we're at with our capital. As you know, with supply chain issues and things, we've had a lot of delays in a number of our projects. These projects, first that we're going to talk about was in fiscal year 2021, '22. These were carryover projects into this budget year. So our water treatment plant, high-service pumps, variable flow devices were completed actually right before the issues we had at Christmas time. They come online, which actually helped during those events. Our Clearwater Access Walkway is complete. I think the only thing we lack on it is just a gate. Also, the Arnold Road Pump Station, we've been working on parts and pieces. Have been coming in very slowly over the past year, year and a half. That came online actually this week. So we're glad to have that on because it had been giving us trouble. The Channel Inn sidewalk, which is Highway 64 out here, I guess it's the Wells Hotel now. That sidewalk is being completed. Also, the Presbyterian Church sidewalk was completed back in the fall and brick. And actually, we had a few issues with the brick coming up. We had a number of complaints about some of the bricks being loose there in that new area. And so I know Bryson's is, if they've not went out there, Lamar, they're going to go out there. Okay, they've done a repair to those. So hopefully, we don't have any more issues with that. Our large dump truck is still pending delivery. Again, that's a year and a half, two years in. Our ton dump truck is still pending delivery. Our electric bucket truck has been two years. That's still pending delivery. They say the large trucks, any large chassis truck, it's taken two years to get those in. So worried a little bit about the fire truck, but it sounds like Ryan said the chassis is in on that. So hopefully, they can get it going a little bit quicker. But this bucket truck is taking two years. The Little Bear Pen Pump Station Generator, which was large generator, is in, and it's just pending the installation.
What, oh, I don't know. Is this putting us in bad places with the dump trucks and things that we're not getting?
No, we still, Lamar, you want to address that?
We're still serviceable?
Bring your mic closer.
Okay.
International Truck Place, they're still not sure when we're going to get that truck. I mean, we're coming up on two years on this thing. But the one it's replacing is still workable. Yeah, it is.
So.
I wish it would come in, but it's just not here.
Do we need to change our five-year schedule or whatever it is to expect two-year delays? Or is that something that going forward where they don't expect us to continue? Or they do expect it to continue?
I'm not sure what the new normal is.
I don't either. That's what I'm saying. This is the new normal.
I tried to do a 10-year rotation.
I know.
I may have to bump that to nine to get an 11.
That's what I'm saying. Is there something that we need to do to anticipating these things not being in the fiscal year we expect them to be in?
Well, I think that's something that I have to be mindful of. And if the truck's not going to be, or the piece of equipment is not going to be serviceable for at least two years, then I'll probably have to bump it up in the schedule and say why. But right now, everything that we're waiting on, I think we're okay. Everything that I've proposed this year, which is pretty light, we're okay.
Okay.
If that happens two years, I think we're still okay.
It's not high mileage, it's years.
It's not. It's wear and tear. For example, getting 10 years out of a garbage truck, that's asking a lot in a very corrosive environment. I mean, the truck may not have that many miles on it, but the bed of it, all that back and forth compact, it wears thin. At 10 years, they're usually shot.
Can you advance to the next?
Is this going to take two years to change, dude? Yeah.
Well, I can continue on while they're fixing that. So we'll jump into this fiscal year, which is '22, '23 capital. Our Pine Street sidewalk, as all of you have seen, connected to, there we go, connected to the sidewalk that runs down in front of the Wells Hotel was completed. That's a nice connector to Pine Street, or not Pine Street, but Pinecrest. It's been a big asset. A lot of people have really bragged on that. That's completed. First Street sidewalk was completed as well, along with the repaving of First Street. And then you got the new development going in there. So there's a lot of activity right there on First Street. There's going to be a little modification down there at the end where it drops off the gas station. It'll be done here in the spring to make that a little safer. The Third Street sidewalk and drainage replacement, probably seen that in progress. They removed the elevated sidewalk that we talked about the past couple of years. It was deteriorating along the Bear Mountain Outfitters building there. The plan that was approved has been implemented. They just poured concrete in the ramp going into the side door. I know the owner, the cannons of the building, the cannons are going to be stuccoing the exterior of the building. The drainage is connected. Like they've got one more drainage pipe coming off the side of the building to connect into the new drainage that was installed under the road there. So we shouldn't have any more of that water rolling out over the sidewalk that's there, the new sidewalk or out into the road there and freezing like we had before. It should all be collected in our drainage system, so.
Is that going to be labeled loading zone? That area?
That is a loading zone, so that's something we can do, you know.
Well, you know, if it's not, it's going to get parked in.
Right. That's true. So we'll definitely have to do that. It is a loading zone now. Actually, right before they started, I think there was a couple of trucks in there. I noticed the day before they even got started. So we can definitely mark that. We'll just have to look and see exactly how they want to mark it. I know the DOT is going to come in at some point. While they're in here, we may even, you know, be able to get them to do some of the thermal. I don't know, but anyway, we'll definitely have to do so. Or you're right, they'll be parked.
Josh, who's going to pay the part of the road that's been removed?
We can pay it yourself. I'll probably ask a contractor.
Okay.
The Gibson Street Electric has been complete. Still waiting on Water and Sewer. We'll talk about that in a minute. Actually, next year, Water and Sewer. So what happened, Steelwell Engineering has been working on the Water and Sewer for some time now. They got the water approval pretty quick, the sewer. They were back and forth with the state. They have now got state approval for the sewer. Bids will be received March 30th. It'll be 120-day completion in the contract. The shortage of materials may cause delay. Probably will end up being carried over to '23, '24 budget. There was approved to spend $220,000 of ARPA funds on the project, which was allocated in the 2022, '23 North Carolina State Budget for Highlands. That had to be run through the process, and Steelwell did that over about a six-month or six-week period with Rebecca's help, and they finally okayed us to use that, those funds on that for the $220,000.
So it's funds from a previous year, but because of supply chain issues, we have to do it, and they're allowing us to push that forward?
Right. So when you receive those funds, you have to go through a process of advertisement and then receiving the bids and going through a longer process than if we were just going to do it ourselves. And so they've given until the end of '26 to use the funds. So we got the $220,000, and we've just been kind of waiting to see what to spend it on. And since this was in the process of being designed, we didn't know whether we could work it in, but the state allowed us to do that. So they've approved a letter of intent to fund on it, so. The wastewater treatment plant belt press replacement is scheduled for April delivery. Talked to Dale White down at the sewer plant. He said they're going to take him offline in March to try to get everything upgraded within the building. The building is going to be upgraded. There's going to be a chute that is covered where they don't have to actually load a truck, go over to the bay and dump it in the bay. It'll actually go over into that bay, into that drying bay facility. It'll be a lot better process once they get that done. So again, the scheduled delivery for the press is April. Hopefully, that holds and we get it done within this budget year. Carolina Way Sewer Line Replacement, scheduled. I think Steelwell is going to do that within the next few weeks. The water meter replacement, again, with supply chain issues. We might receive the meters in this fiscal year, but the actual project will have to be carried over into '23, '24 to get that done. So that's putting us back a year on that project. And again, it was a three-year project. So, you know, it's going to back us up. And again, I don't know how long the supply chain issues are going to continue. So it may be tough to get the next group of meters for next year that we're planning on, so. The pump station generators, they're looking at a March to April delivery on those. Any questions on any of that?
Well, I'll just say this. This supply chain thing really is pushing us behind. We ordered those generators when? Months ago.
It's been sometime.
That's what I thought, right at the beginning of the fiscal year. And you don't really know when they will show up.
They're trickling in. We've actually got a few of them in hand. They're beginning to show up.
Okay.
So the unbudgeted capital project that we have been looking at for a couple of years, we received the same as the $220,000. We received $100,000 in the 2021, '22 state budget for Highlands for a water and sewer project. After talking with Lamar, we decided to do a Poplar Street Water Line Replacement, which is replacing from 64 down to the shed here with a six-inch ductile and fire protection. It's taken a long time to pull all that paperwork together and go through that process to get approved. So bids were received March 3rd with Steelwell Enterprises being the parent low bidder at $168,446. And want to start this spring. And again, that $100,000 is ARPA funds that were allocated in the North Carolina State Budget for '21, '22. A budget amendment will need to be approved at the March Town Board meeting to allocate the funds for the project. So again, this is just a project that has taken, you know, a year and a half, two years to come to fruition. So that's just the way things are going right now. Hopefully, Steelwell has the material. I know ductile iron pipe is a big delay, but some, you know, some contractors like Steelwell has some extra on a yard. You know, hopefully, they don't have to wait on that. So. So looking at the upcoming year, '23 and '24 capital, a succession plan will begin, actually, it'll begin this current fiscal year for the electric crew. We want to hire two linemen, hopefully, this month. We've got a retiree that is leaving us the 1st of May. So these positions need to be filled in order to be trained for, you know, a number of months while we've still got folks here with experience. We've got three more in line that could retire within the next year. So what we want to do is hire his replacement and one more in this fiscal year. And then we want to hire two more in the next fiscal year just to be ready for those retirements when they come around. That way, it gives plenty of time for training on this system, and hopefully, they'll be comfortable with it. Also, hiring of a wastewater treatment plant operator in the upcoming '23, '24 budget year to prepare for upcoming retirements as well.
Wait, water treatment operator?
Water treatment operator, yes.
Oh, God's going to say.
What happened with water treatment plant operators? Again, we're going to advertise, you know, for those folks that have their credentials. Again, they're few and far between, but we'll reach back out and see if we get lucky to find someone that is certified, that's willing to come, you know, work for the Town of Highlands. If not, we'll be hiring somebody and actually putting them through the certification process.
And Josh, we just reiterate this. We knew this day was coming with our line crews, that they were clustered around retirement dates. And we have to be proactive now to make a training transition stage to where, once all of those linemen retire, we have qualified people to take over the system.
Correct. What you don't want is them to all leave, and then you have to hire new with nobody to train them. And those four all came at the same time, and they'll be, you know, leaving around the same time. So we definitely wanted to get some guys in here before. So in the water treatment plant is the same way. There are several down there that's close. This will be a start to hire someone else. Again, it's one of those things where finding somebody with the credentials is going to be tough. Finding somebody that wants to do that type of work and go through the certification process with Lamar probably take.
Three, four years.
Three, four years. And at that point, you know, it's one of those deals where they're going to stick with it. And that's something that, you know, we'll have to work around as well, so. But we're just trying to prepare for these things. Also, in the upcoming budget will be a salary study. It's been about eight or nine years since we've done one. It's time. That'll be basically $25,000 allocated for that and a legal review for the Unified Development Ordinance. I talked to a partner in Spurles, which has been helping us on the short-term rental. They said that they felt like a budget placeholder of not to exceed $50,000 would cover them going through that, doing a legal review, you know, over the next budget year of that Unified Development Ordinance, which I think is critical at this point. So any questions? Lamar, it did come to my mind. I believe we are still waiting on the sanitation truck for this year as well.
That is correct.
So add one more truck to the waiting.
Those are the ones that wear out.
Yes. So basically, an update on Dog Mountain. They filed an extension for the engineering and environmental reports. Weathers Ravanell is working on that. So the timeline was updated. So if we follow the timeline according to what the state wants us to do by the time we get through the process, it looks like probably a mid-year in 2024 before work starts. It's a long, drawn-out process you have to follow, and we're doing that. But it's, the timeline is going to push us into mid-'24.
That is the trade-off for the free money, is you have to deal with the state bureaucracy.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So we've been trying to explain that to the folks that, you know, come in from Dog Mountain. And I ask is I can probably spread the word it's not going to be happening soon. You know, it's going to take a while, but it will be done. Money is allocated for, so. And it may give some time for the economy to slow a little bit, hopefully, and maybe, you know, some folks will be interested in the job, and maybe the materials will be a little bit more readily accessible by that time as well. I got my fingers crossed, but I don't know.
That's true.
That's all I have.
Rebecca, why don't you get up to the podium, please? There you go.
We do this every year. We're standing pretty good this year. Property tax collections are up $92,992 from last February 22nd. They're at $2.8 million. This represents a collection rate of 99.28%. And they're actually collecting some old taxes, which I thought was pretty interesting. So as they come in monthly, they have a breakout of past years, what was left and that kind of thing. And so there's actually been a lot of back taxes being paid, which is really good, so. Sales tax revenues are at $836,000 and have increased approximately $44,000 since February of 2022. Franchise tax is up as well, hits at $83,000, which has increased by $18,000 from February of last year as well.
Can I ask you a question? The franchise tax?
Yes.
Who is the point of collection of that? Is it the state and then they distribute it?
I get it from the state, yes.
Okay.
It comes from the same place that the sales tax comes from.
Okay. And then the sales tax, are we on a projected target for?
Yes.
And what will be our, you think, our total?
It's on the last slide. I'm not 100% sure.
Is the franchise tax on the front here or is that what?
No. I'm not 100% sure. I've researched that two or three times. And do you have any idea, Josh? Can you explain that any better?
I've researched it too, and I can't.
It doesn't.
They pull from another.
Yeah.
It's kind of like the Powell bill. It's collected statewide, and then they prorate it to the community.
Yes.
I think that's how it works.
It's not a straightforward tax. The general fund revenues, excluding $2,000 that we've been donated to the police department this year, and we exclude those donations every year for the rec and the police, but the rec didn't have anything this year. Revenue is at $4.5 million, which is $133,000 more than compared to last year. That includes everything, from fees at the rec park to sales tax to franchise tax. I mean, it includes everything. And we are definitely on track for budgeted revenues this year, so. Expenditures are at 59% spent, and usually about this time it's 66.6%, so we're under, so that's a good thing, too.
That's because we can't get anything to spend.
Exactly. You're exactly right. Most of those capital projects aren't coming out of here, though. So that's where we're good. The town had an original fund balance appropriation at the beginning of the budget year of $1.8 million. And as of February 23rd, we have increased it by $45,000. Those were the budget amendments we've done so far in the general fund. All revenues, this is enterprise funds revenues. All revenue should be at or below 66.7%, and we're actually a little bit higher this year. And I'm pretty sure it's because we're having more people stay year-round, so therefore, the utilities are costing more water. They're using more water. They're using more electric. Could be also in relation to some of those short-term rentals that we've all been talking about. Just there's more people here. So the water is at 74%, sewers at 75%, sanitation is at 73.5%, and electrics at 74%.
But sanitation is static. I mean, it's the same every month for everybody.
It's doing pretty good. I think we've had a good bit of building, though, too, with new construction.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been up pretty good this year. The expenditures as well should be at 66.7% and are as follows. The water is at 55%, sewers at 20%, sanitation is at 58%, and electrics at 49%. So those are all being pretty well monitored. And again, like Amy said, you can't buy anything. You can't spend any money.
Is, are we, you know, you're saying it should be, because we're two-thirds of the way through the year, we expected to be at 66%?
Yeah.
Is that actually true for us? Or, I mean, because of our seasonality, surely, we don't spend the same every month?
We're beginning to spend the same every month. But the spending has a lot to do with your capital projects, your dumpsters for the garbage, not dumpsters, but your trash cans for the garbage department. Different things that we buy a lot of times upfront, but then because of this chain and supply, a lot of things are not going to happen until the end. So you're going to see those numbers increase pretty drastically over the next couple of months.
That's what I'm saying, because they may be artificially lowered now, but they're not going to necessarily mean that we're going to be below budget.
No, we're not probably going to be below budget at all. And if we are below budget, you're going to see a lot of that below budget being transferred into next year's budget because we'll be using it because it's not here. So you're exactly right. And then these are the three-year projections that we do. And I don't normally go over them, but you can kind of see.
Everybody else is full year.
Yeah.
All the other years.
Water, some meters they go backwards because we did more out of balance. So we didn't all remember. Pretty on schedule. Sewer, same, that's same week the last couple of years. We've had a lot of things going on down.
Sewer saying that same the last couple of years, we've had a lot of things going on down at the sewer plant. We're pretty good. And sanitation. This year it's a little bit behind.
So when you, so when you're talking about the blue revenues, that includes transfers from, okay.
What was it like? You're just a little over a million then? So it's up, how much do you think? So that would put it, that put it closer to two million then?
Yes.
Okay.
Property tax continues to increase. Of course, everybody knows nature is going to be up. So your your property tax is up five thousand this year. Next year we different unless we go. Um, so it's actually we have five hundred forty-eightish thousand. Franchise tax topic is also going to be up a bit a little bit. And then, um.
So so when you said that five hundred forty-eight, that's just the what it is right now. We expect come in, but it's still going to be one point six is what we expect, not two. So the five hundred is not added to the one point six?
No, it's not.
It's added to the eight hundred. Yeah, it's added to the eight hundred thousand.
This will be your twenty twenty-two and this will be your twenty twenty-three. Those are the differences.
We get, uh, how much sales tax can we get?
A hundred twenty thousand.
Was it seven? What what is the sales tax?
It is. So the town gets about. So it's six point seven five. The state takes four seven five. Two percent comes to the county and then it's distributed on an ad valorem basis. It can be a per cap or ad valorem basis. If it's per cap or with the receipt, it hardly. So to do an ad valorem, so we get roughly six and a half percent.
Or the.
Of that two percent that comes to make.
And and I appreciate this. Yeah. And I appreciate the county doing it on an ad valorem basis, which means that we're pretty much paying almost half the property tax bill in the county. So we're probably getting about half of that allocation. No?
Well, it's six and a half percent of the two percent. So when you look at it, the county is getting a large chunk.
I've always wondered.
Franklin gets, you know, uh, we'd probably get a little bit more in Franklin, but.
It's distributed between the municipalities and the county.
And the county.
See, so we still get benefit of county money. Still have it to spend ourselves.
If you were in a, you know, heavily populated area, they go down.
Yes.
No, it's just, uh, the state allows you six, seven, five, and they allow you to go up a quarter percent if it's voted on. And that's what the county tried to do back.
Last November.
To go to.
The county would drive that up.
Yes, county would drive that. Now, it can go higher than that. You know, there's a few places in the state's got, you know, seven, four, seven and a half, but that's got to be special legislation. It's adopted in Raleigh, so.
I've asked before about hospitality.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think it's allowed looking into that. Uh, impact fees, service fees, things like that. Uh, impact fees are allowed, but there are actually some challenges to that right now in the court system. Yeah.
Would that just, Mark, would that just be then for the town of Highlands for a restaurant that prepared a meal?
You know, I've been in the four, but it's in another state and we we got a tax on deals that we used to pay.
So the state of North Carolina regulates that pedal. And so I I do know Georgia does that. And you you experienced that South Carolina. North Carolina just restricts it so much, they only allow you to do certain things. And I don't think anything like that would be allowed unless they, you know, blessed it.
You might be able to get special legislation. For example, it's not Bochum and Asheville now trying to get legislation for transportation on their sales tax to go up to seven point five. I believe they've got a bill.
For their transit.
For the transit. They're earmarking point five for their transit system. Okay. Okay.
Can you give an update on the interest rate? Off for our savings?
Microphone.
I do not know exactly what the percent is, but I know that we're getting almost twenty and thirty thousand dollars an account for the reserves right now. So I'd have to go figure it out each.
So interest rates obviously are, you know, at most likely, but but for us, it's it's really been positive.
I can shoot an email really quick and find out exactly the exact number.
You said it's twenty per account? How many accounts do we have?
Oh, no, no, no. It's only twenty per the general fund reserve and the electric reserve.
Oh, okay.
We've got like eleven accounts there, but they don't all have the same balances as the, um, general and the electric. So those two are are gaining pretty good right now.
And we now have our most of our money in the trust fund, the state trust fund, which allows us to take it out on demand with the next day.
Yeah.
And it could drop down to.
It was really, really low. We weren't even getting like, I don't even think it was half a percent or less. May not even even be getting half a percent.
Truly shot up.
Yeah. So we're we're we've been enjoying watching that grow every month. Anything else?
When do you think the, um, revenue neutral neutral formula will be applied toward the end of this budget cycle?
Uh, we won't adopt it until July first with the new budget, but we've already calculated it. Um, so we kind of have an idea already of what it's going to be. We also discussed yesterday looking at the fire tax because they'll also make it revenue neutral. So we actually talked about going back and pulling some of the numbers from the county for that and kind of getting an idea of what that's going to be too before the county does it.
Yeah, the county works on, since the fire tax, the county, the county will be revenue neutral for each fire department. They haven't got that together yet. Uh, and they'll send us that once they, once they do have that together. But, I mean, a revenue neutral right now with the numbers we have from the county, uh, it would drop us from, you know, just over fifteen cents to nine and a half cents.
And the county, the county, coming from a, um, the last TDC meeting talking with John Sherrill is the county. Um, they they still don't know what's going to happen with all these people petitioning the revow. But like if they were to make that decision today, it would go, I think the county is forty cents right now, and it would go down to twenty-six cents.
We don't know how much more we're going to take of the county budget doing.
Do what? Mark, I'm sorry.
As far as the pie, we're going to have to pay a bigger part of the pie for the county budget and the school budget, aren't we? RSS RSS valuation grew faster than the rest of the county. So we're going to take on a bigger burden. We don't know what that is yet.
Well, um.
We're at forty-six percent now.
Highlands and Highlands and Highlands Township, if I did, I do think the numbers when we looked at were like sixty percent increase.
They were.
So you're definitely going to be, I mean, House is going to share the majority of the burden there on. Even going revenue neutral, you're going to be paying more if your if your house went like double and triple or quadruple, which some of these did.
Where did the rest of the county go? If we went up sixty percent, where did they go up?
It's all over. A lot of a lot of areas in the county are fifty percent, fifty-five, forty-five. I mean, it's all over. The lowest, which was interesting to me, was the town of Franklin. I think it's thirty-six percent, but that was the lowest. Everybody was, so it's from thirty-six percent to like mid-six.
So the last time I looked, the township in the plateau was carrying about forty-six percent of the tax burden for this county. But with this revow and even revenue net neutral, because the property values have gone up like my house is double. Some folks are going to pay more to where I think we'll be closer to fifty percent, um, of the tax burden for the county. Even with revenue neutral, because you have winners and you have losers.
Yeah.
Buzz, did you want to bring up the sun setter tax? The that, or is it time to discuss the that one point five percent? Can we talk about that? Okay, well, I'll bring it up for discussion. About ten years ago, we had the problem with, um, upgrading recreation facilities. We added increased taxes by one point five cents per hundred. We did a great job of upgrading the rec facilities. In fact, we went beyond that one point five percent, which was, I think, generating about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. After that sunsetted after three years and we'd kind of met the benchmarks on the recreation department, we decided to go to paving and earmark that money, continue again sunsetting for paving. And we really met our goals pretty much now for paving, give and take some other areas. Now we're going to be coming up again with the sun setting. The question is, do we continue to do the sun setting? Or do we just acknowledge that that just becomes a part of the the budget, um, from here on out? So that's the question that I think we we need to to review at some point in time.
I think it depends on what we have in the budget that we need to, you know, maybe reallocate for. I mean, we had it recreation, then we put it in paving. If paving is done, then are we going to, do we have something else that we need to put in Lamar's checkbook over there?
Hey, I tell you what, let's let Lamar do his report.
There's really one thing that, uh, you know, paving is ongoing. So we got behind on the paving and had to catch up. So we don't need to get behind again.
I was going to say, part of it.
We need to continue to pay, but what we have neglected is sidewalks. So each year we spend thirty thousand dollars for maintenance and repair. Well, that don't go very far. Uh, it it repairs the worst of the worst. So I think what we need to do is if you want to go another three years, is put a lot of that money toward toward sidewalks and not only, you know, fixing the rough spots, but actually replacing, uh, you know, large sections that that need it. Uh, the solid has has eaten up the curves. You know, I know a lot of places, especially on Main Street, that need to be replaced. And you, the the thirty thousand dollars don't go very far. So, but I'll let Lamar comment on that, but.
I would like to look at that third, well, it's in the presentation, but I'd like to go at least a hundred and fifty thousand. Because it takes a lot of money to replace curb and dirt and sidewalk. It's not a cheap adventure.
Well, I, we could think about doing our our sunsetting tax, making it permanent for repair and maintenance.
Yeah.
Regardless of what it needs to be. That may not be enough for whatever repair and maintenance it is, but that's that's where we get behind is repair maintenance. We always can get new projects done because we find money and we allocate money. It's it's keeping what we got repaired and maintained.
Yeah.
Anyway, just a thought.
Okay. Any other questions about the budget? I I have one. How how are we doing with the Jackson County side? With the fire that, um, tax they contribute and the property taxes?
So they, two years ago, they increased, we requested, and they increased from fifty thousand to eighty thousand. I think we get about eighty-three thousand from Jackson.
Okay.
Which was up from seven thousand or whatever it was.
Any other questions about the budget?
Go ahead.
No, no, that's fine.
All right, we are a little bit ahead of schedule, but not that much. And we don't want to cut our next presenter off at all. So Lamar, why don't we go ahead and and start your presentation? Always kid Lamar telling if 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 he wasn't asking so much for pub in public works, we could, we could handle this budget just fine. But that never happens.
So we'll start, uh, the very first slide, we'll talk about street stuff. What I'd like to discuss first is the Second Street covert replacement project. We discussed this slightly last year with some drainage prob projects, uh, within our master stormwater plant. This is the one identified then is probably the most worthy is the one on Second Street. Here in the last few years, when you get the big rains, this one actually overtopped. Didn't used to do it, does now. Eric, you may have been involved in a rescue there. I know some of them were, uh, because someone walked through that flooded area and missed the road. But anyway, that's, uh, that's what that project involves replacing that cover. What I proposed is a three-sided precast box cover. And I say three-sided because I want it to be bottomless. That is what the Army Corps overwhelmingly wants because it allows the macro inverted, am I saying that right, Joe? In the stream to bed the migrate up and down. So that's the estimate to replace that. And that's what that project involves.
Is it going to be a level? Level, you know, we're not going to have a hump in the road.
I'm going to raise the grade of the road. That that doesn't represent just replacing the cover. That road needs rating.
Okay.
But then, and if I get a sort of a a nod from everyone, I've already got pricing to go in, do some geotechnical works and borings, so I can go ahead and get started on this design. I'll need to do some surveys. And what I want to do is not have a hump, but I want to raise the road grade up a couple of feet or at least a foot and a half to make that more smoother transition and not.
Not fifth street.
That's correct.
I have a question about this. It seems to me that looking at some of the federal and state funding for stormwater and and so forth, do you think we could possibly get a grant for this? But here's what I worry about getting the grant, like we were just talking. If we get the grant, does that push it back with the paperwork for several years of of having to deal with the the grants? But Josh, what do y'all think? Is there any possibility of applying for a grant to do?
I'd have to look to see if they're going to have another cycle.
Okay.
With the the funding that they just released in the fall was for, uh, stormwater, mainly stormwater, with the first one was water and sewer. So I I don't know if they've got any funding left. If they do, I can definitely check into that. We're going to have to have it designed though before.
Right.
Applied, so.
So we need to move ahead with that. Have it, if you will, shovel ready.
I think what you want to do at this point, if if the board's okay with it, is to move forward with some surveying and some cord drilling and things like that, see exactly what we would have to do.
And then I can do the design on.
Then you can do the design.
I've got a price on the geotechnics, be about eight thousand. I don't expect the surveying to be.
You're talking about in this fiscal year then?
I'd like to do it now so that July one, I'd be ready.
So that you can move the project forward in the next fiscal year for the capital part.
That's correct. And all that's included in that price, but I would like to move ahead with it just a little if I can.
I certainly would be in favor of that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. So, Lamar, we're, we're doing a project where we're working on our streets. No state street is really involved.
No, that is a town street, and it's been identified as a problem.
And, and let me just bring this up. And Lamar's worked with me on this before, over at Trillium, on the Horse Cove Road, which is a state street. I know folks have been talking about, well, we could improve the drainage there. The problem is, the state has done a hydrology study saying it's okay, and that's their road. So, we're always, you know, stopped there. They say, no, the hydrology study says it's okay, and that's our position. Here, we're in control of making this decision now and correcting the problem.
That's correct. It is a town street, as short as it is, and as less as it serves, that is a town street.
Okay.
You said last year, this was your top project. We went through all of the drainage study that has never adopted, and you said this is the one that needs to be done.
Yes, that's one of, is the problem.
So, so basically, you're saying now's the time to do it this year, get it done?
Yes, that cover, as you can see, it's a corrugated metal pipe. It's thirty years old, the bottom's out of it.
Okay.
They want the bottom out.
It's time to do something. The best thing to do is a three-sided.
Time to do something before the street starts taping in.
A less expensive alternative. That street serves two houses. The dog park and, what's his name, construction.
And also, all of the Spring Street shops use that as their back entrance.
That little parking area over there.
Yep.
If you build that up, like you're talking about, what's gonna happen with that parking area?
Tie, tie it back in. I don't see that being a problem. For Worth Construction.
I'm sorry.
Are you concerned about Worth Construction parking area? Because that's the one that's adjacent to the cover.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about. We got, other than the parking area and those two, Warth and, and the dog park over there, that's the only two things that street serves, because it's closed off going in Bryson's, going in.
That's true, and the backside of Spring Street Shops. They all use that as.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
But the Spring Street Shops are, I guess, there's some validity there. They have parking out front, too.
That's where their customer parking is.
You got a couple of businesses that have specs behind them, too.
So, there's new water coming off Main Street?
Some off Main. It's mostly spring.
Mostly spring?
Twenty-eight.
So, two of the.
Ah, because it's all fail and falling, that's the low point.
I calculated the drainage area back several months ago. It's several, like.
I was just trying to figure out if there's some way we could divert it, fire further up and not have it collect, and then have it to take care of it there.
It's the low point at that point.
The long point for that.
Of that drainage system, which goes all the way up to South Street, part of O E I, all the spring, the backside of Main.
And it's all gotta go down there in the creek anyway.
It's where it's got to go. And I was following the guideline from the comprehensive stormwater plan when I used a three-sided box cover. To answer your question, yes, you can put a regular cover in it, much cheaper. And that's what was done here, thirty years. It can be done again and still raise the road grade. It's just what's your favorite?
When you say much cheaper, how much cheaper?
Probably shave a hundred thousand off of it easy. Easy. Maybe more.
Problem is, is I think our, we're, the intensity of some rainfalls are becoming, you know, we don't have long, all day rain.
Lamar? Going with the, kind of the standard cover versus that precast concrete system, is there any difference on longevity and serviceability?
I expect the precast concrete to go a hundred years.
As much impervious as we're gonna have.
And the other system?
Yeah.
Well, that's third. No matter what you put in it, it's gonna be twenty to thirty. If you change materials up to high-dency polyethylene, it's probably getting forty, fifty out of it.
Okay. But the long-term solution is the precast?
Well, to do long-term and water quality, when you get into the little bugs coming up and down the stream bed, then you have to go bottoms.
Okay.
All you're asking for now is to do the geotechnical work, so you know how to figure out what it's gonna cost and what you need to do, I think.
That's correct.
Well, I believe the consent is to move forward.
It is, starting July first. And if we don't want to do that kind of construction, I need to know it now. If you want to just do a plain cover, now's a good time to tell them, and I will work on a new estimate.
What's the difference in volume a plain cover could, could handle and the, the box, three-tier box cover?
Three-tier box, I was planning on designing it around the growth of that area with the permeable and impermeable, to go well in, like I said, a hundred years. I was going to go five, about ten. What's there now is much, much smaller than that. So, as that area developed, this thing don't have to be looked at again for a very, very, very long time. It's very hard to do a round cover.
I'm just, Lamar, I'm just speculating, okay? I don't know anything, but for example, the, what we call the rabbit hole now, if that were to ever to be developed differently, would that put pressure on the stormwater?
Absolutely.
Okay.
How long does a concrete cover last? I mean, we're talking about concrete sidewalks, carving gutter.
In that particular situation, I expect it to go a hundred years.
Well, why, why does that last longer than our carbon gutter?
Carbon gutter is exposed to salt.
And this won't be?
It's bottomless.
That's, salt's gotta go somewhere. Oh. Okay, I see.
That's rotted out now.
So, it'll kill all macronverbites with the salt, right?
Yeah. Thin them out a little bit.
Lamar, is that widening the channel?
Yes.
Above and below, because right now, it's very narrow.
It's like this, and it's, it needs to be much wider. And I can widen the channel out within our right-of-way to keep it from being a maintenance issue, you know, for a very long time, be easy to maintain. You can see from that picture, the channel's very narrow.
I think if you're almost gonna save a hundred thousand dollars and the longevity, and not only the longevity of the materials, but the longevity of more water going through, as you're saying, you're calculating the more water, I, I think probably you should do a longer-term vision and do it that way as opposed to just replace the cover.
This is the same exact job as Spruce, Fifth, and Laurel, except those were four-sided box covers. They have bottoms. This one does not. I have to design it footer, you know, to.
To hold it up.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, anyway, a lot of these covers have a bottom after a while for your macronverbites, because they're full of silt, which is the same thing in the bottom, or a bottomless one.
Yeah, that's true. If you bury it.
Anyway, okay.
So, Lamar wants an answer about how to proceed with the design?
Yes, if we want to proceed with a three-sided box cover, then it's only do the geotech.
Okay.
If not, I don't need to do that.
I thought we weren't making any decisions today.
He just wants to know which direction on the design that he wants to pursue.
Well, I thought, I want you to know, I thought that the longer-term design.
Yes.
What is what Lamar's talking about would be, would be my preference.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Lamar?
I will talk about paving. I will do the geotechnical and do some surveying and try to get started with that.
Lamar, have you got, have you got that in your current budget? So, that'll be a, that'll be a budget then for March, if that's okay with you guys.
Okay. What kind of money are we talking about?
Eight thousand for the geo and probably a couple for the survey.
Sure.
Or less. Or the geo is eight thousand. Okay, talk about paving. This year's list, what I've got on it right now is Laurelwood, which can't quite tell it from the picture, but it's deteriorating. Gibson, as soon as the water and sewer projects get finished, proposing to pave that from end to end as is.
Lamar, let me just clarify. For Gibson, you're talking about where it starts at the biological station, going all the way over to, um, Hare Strives?
That's correct.
That whole link, okay.
Are your little arrows meaning that we'll just geotech from the Gibson, because Gibson's not gonna get done this year?
Uh, the arrows were just there.
Okay.
They, they're meaningless. Uh, no, I have to wait on the utility projects to finish.
Right, I was gonna say, because I don't think you're gonna be doing the paving this year, this fiscal year.
Well, this is for proposed twenty-three, twenty-four anyway.
Oh, okay.
I'm hoping to have the utility projects finished early on in twenty-four, maybe. How do you get it clicked?
There you go.
Okay. Also, the paved portion of Mainy Road, the town portion of Wine Oak Road, Laurel Street, and then on Third Street, which sprang the twenty-eight, just the travel lanes, I'm not talking about doing the parking where the curb and gutter is. It's actually in pretty good shape, but the travel lanes, especially the, I guess you'd call it northbound lane, it, it definitely needs leveled before paving. It's, it's set quite a bit.
That where the, the electric cars are going in?
Yes, but not the paving portion where they would actually be charging. And this is for, the mayor asked me to put this in here for y'all to discuss here at the retreat. Have a road discussion about two state highways, or two state streets. One is Wing Gina, which goes from Mirror Lake Road all the way to the top of the hill. I still call it Lenny's Place. So, you know where I'm talking about. It is a state road, and its current condition, every time it rains, it silts up. Wine Oak, Periquin, the erosion control device is on the side of Colossage, and then straight into Mirror Lake. It's, it's an issue for that whole entire neighborhood, as well as Mirror Lake. And then the other road, like to discuss is Upper Lake, the remaining short portion that is controlled by the state of North Carolina. And I think the idea is to discuss whether the board is interested in starting some dialogue with the D O T about taking those roads over as town streets and paving and fixing the erosion issue.
I personally think that's important.
Yeah. In the Upper Lake, you have that nice paved road, and then all of a sudden, it looks like just a little trail, so. And, and Lamar, you, um, have made kind of reference before. The what Upper Lake section came about was there was an expansion of the town limb, and we took over the road, and then we left this one off. Never include that.
Well, as best I can tell from the old maps, the Kelsey Mount, what was inside the Kelsey Mount, actually Town Street. But was it outside the Kelsey Mount? It was in the county. So, the other end, little short end of Upper Lake was the state. That's.
It remained a state.
And I guess that's the way it got to where it is.
If we decide to go forward with two projects, how difficult is it to get the state to turn those over to us?
Well, that's, the last time we went through it, I think, I think it took a, a letter or some dialogue between the two government bodies, and then ultimately, the state turned it over to.
It probably just gives a hand check, go for it.
Yeah.
That's the way I got it.
Is there anything we want them to take that we, I guess, want?
Then we'll have to.
Second street, so they can do the cover. Or not.
Uh, I, I would say this, Commissioner, the D O T's very enthusiastic about getting rid of roads, not taking more on. They can't even maintain what they have. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think these are, these are obviously sentimentation problems, maintenance problems, all those kind of things that we were trying to alleviate by paving them. I don't particularly like paving, but I also don't like silt.
What about North Cobb?
I can answer that. For North Cobb, that is a state road. A number of years ago, I talked to the state folks, and they said, yes, we will pave that road if all the property owners would give us the right-of-way. And what happened, Commissioner, they even staked it out. I said, boy, the, the paving is about to happen. Except one property owner said, no, I won't give you the right-of-way, and they dropped that like a bad habit and walked away from it. Now, it might be that that property owner has changed minds, and I, I, I'm probably gonna revisit that. But, um, that's, that's the way they work. If, if, if there's a clear right-of-way that they don't have to worry about, they'll, they'll pave these roads, and, but any resistance, they back off.
But now, is it, is it correct in saying that if the state were to pave it, they have to make it wider, correct? But if the town were to do it, you wouldn't have.
You can pave it in place.
Yeah.
And, and that's the situation with, um, Big Bear Pen.
Sure.
That, that road, um, the property owners in question gave the right-of-way, and they'll make it, you know, a, a wider road where two cars can pass.
So, I stated my preference. I think we should pave these roads.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
We'll start the dialogue with the D O T and see, see where we get.
Yeah, we, you know, when we just kind of sit there and say, yeah, proceed, we're developing the budget. If, if it gets down to what do we do and what we don't do, then, you know, we, we, we have the red line. So, okay.
Well, I did an estimate of what it would take to.
Okay.
Not only pave it, but fix some issues other than just paving.
Okay.
The other thing on this particular slide is the sidewalk maintenance and repair. I threw a number at it for us to discuss, to try to up the ante to replace the sidewalks. I think we've already discussed it already, but that's why that's there.
So, this is just repair of a Main Street?
Or Main Street, twenty-eight.
Sidewalks.
I could go on and on and on. Maple Street. There's a lot of sidewalks that need to be, and carbon gutters that simply need to be replaced.
What's a, since we're talking about sidewalks, what's the status of the one oh six?
We'll talk about that in a minute.
Again.
Okay.
It's on the gym. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Going into water and sewer department and plants, I've got some waterline, proposed waterline improvements. One at Highlands Country Club at Hummingbird, uh, right next to the fireway. An old two-inch galvanized line that definitely needs to be replaced. Same with Melrose, two-inch galvanized line that needs to be replaced, Black Rock Circle. And then the other ones, North Carolina one oh six, the buttermilk area, just some services that need to be put in. Right, currently, the way they stand, the, the way the water gets to some of those houses, there's old lines that's bad material, and it's not really kosher with the standards. I'd like to fix that. It simply needs to be services off of Main Line.
How many services?
I believe it's four. But you have to go under one oh six to get to them, and I think it's gonna be granted. It's not easy. That's the reason it's the way it is. The water treatment plant, uh, not only do we know the caustic tanks need to be replaced, we've refurbished them once already in the past. And now we have the public water supply compliance people, we need to get on with it. So I've got pretty rigid estimates to do all the design permitting, replacement of the caustic tanks, what you see uh, in the picture. Where it says danger, that's caustic, there's two of them. You have some choices. The tanks are bigger than the building now because the building was built around it. When they did it, you can tear a hole for the roof.
Oh, you need to get them out of there.
Or set the new one in, we could cut those into pieces with a cutting torch, get them out. But to get the new one in, you can come through the roof, take side out of the building. And that's not what we want to do with that number, would probably have a one in front of the, the six. What we're proposing to do instead of using four big ones is to go in with four of a smaller diameter. That would actually get through the double doors, take some windows out of the walk path. Take the double doors out, bring them in, stand them up. And we can actually do that. It's been determined we can, we can do.
You have the space for that.
We got the space for that. But I have to tear the building apart.
Do you make the retaining wall bigger?
No.
That's so.
Any more questions about the caustic tanks?
How long have you had these?
Well, since ninety-five, ninety-six. I mean, they've done their job. What's going back will not be steel. It will either be fiberglass or polymer. Either one will last, will stand up to caustic better than steel. That is an epoxy lined steel. We've had issues with it about halfway through this life cycle where we've cut the bottom out, reepoxy. But now it's time to just replace it. Better materials now than the work then to do that with. The bleach tank outside the building, we would like to put basically a cover over it and around it. It's not so much the sun or the snow or the rain or the snow, it's the sun. We need to, we need to shade that thing, get it out of the weather. It depletes the strength of the bleach that's inside the tank. So we need to shield it. Back to the water replacement project, even though we still haven't got the first third done. We need to go ahead and budget for the second third, get a purchaser on those meters. So that hopefully at the end of the cycle next year, we'll be getting to the two thirds mark. And that's what that's about. And uh, also the replace the pre clarifier, storage tank and pump station permitting, bidding, so forth. What I'm looking at is to go ahead and design it this coming fiscal year. Go ahead and get everything done in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. In advance of the next fiscal year where we can do the construction. During that process, um, what I look to discover is a better way of doing it. You know what the initial estimates were to replace that? I'm crossing my fingers that we've come up with a way of doing it, save the town quite a bit of money and have a much more efficient process out of it. So we'll see what happens, but what I'm asking for is to do the design and permitting and get a better handle on the construction cost for the next fiscal year.
And Lamar, you've been in conversations with some engineering firms about what can be done and what.
I've had conversations with engineering firms. We've had some dialogue with the state officials. And we've had quite a bit with the Rural Water Association. And through it all, it took a lot of regulatory and non-regulatory samples um, throughout the plant. To try to get a better handle on how to make that thing, make our plant more efficient. I think I got a pretty, pretty good idea of how to do it and hopefully do it cheaper than with first off.
Okay.
And let it be much more efficient as a whole.
So if we go forward with the two hundred and five thousand, you would think at the end of the fiscal year, you'd have all the design documents, everything ready to go out to bid.
I think I'd be standing here at this meeting next year telling you exactly what we think it's going to cost within a, you know, best assumptions of the times we're at a bid stuff. And we'd know exactly what kind of construction we're doing.
Okay.
Which would be a little different than what's there now.
Okay.
Sewer force main evaluation study. As y'all are aware, we had an issue with sewer force main on US sixty-four back about a month ago. And during that process, we learned we definitely have issues with that force man predominantly from, I'm going to call it sulfuric acid. Eating some of that pipe up, what we expect is in the high points where the gases will collect. And what I'm looking to do is get approved the next fiscal year is to do the evaluation of that line. To determine how much of that line, if any, or if all has to be replaced. And with what materials that will last better than the ones that were originally. That would involve, and we've already went out for request for proposal to some contractors to basically, basically take cookie cutter pieces out of the pipe and plug it and take those and evaluate what's going on. And that's what that's about. Is to evaluate that thing.
This was in those six spots around that, um, those air valves or whatever.
That's what we're going to target.
Yeah.
I don't, well, we don't know, we don't speculate. Even if you dig it out, you can't see it's.
Yeah.
Um, and Electric Department would like to replace the uh, two thousand thirteen service bucket. To answer your question, Amy, yes, if we have to go two years, I think it'll be fine, but it is beginning to wear and tear. It is well used. Contract electric system study, uh, where it says TBD, I could, if I could, I'd erase that out, contain now what it would cost. Met with a consulting firm, a very good one that's recommended to us from Duke. And what we'd like to do is study our electric system as a whole. As far as conductor size, wire sizes, to make sure that not only are we good in twenty twenty-three, but what's it going to take to make us good in twenty thirty-three? As the town grows, as the electric demand grows, I mean, we're talking about little slowpoke car chargers, that's one thing. But what if we get the high speed ones here, you know, the demand picks up and the growth and everything else? And we met with the, uh, consultant, I guess his last week, week four last. He went with me and Yogi basically all over the system. We pulled a lot of numbers and he has a pretty good idea of where to go with this. And what I'm asking for is approval to go ahead and do that in the next fiscal year. It was forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, but let's say fifty thousand dollars. Go ahead and study the system and we'll know our wire sizes, our conductors. Uh, he will look at our breakers, our three phrase breakers, make sure that they're synchronized, correctly sized. And then we're getting all the information we need to based on our loads and our projections. And basically build a roadmap for the future for the town electrical system. You have a comprehensive sewer study, you have a comprehensive water plan, this would be a comprehensive electric plan. So as we get these new linemen, basically have a set of instructions.
And our, our grid has kind of evolved over the years. And, and this would kind of, like you say, um, formalize the plan, improvement plan and everything for it.
Well, it will, it'll give you an idea of if you have any weak spots where they're at, what you need to do to fix it. Mr. Thomas, he uh, he did look at over pretty intensely while he was here to get an idea of how to approach our system because he does that for a lot of systems. And he was actually amazed at the.
That it still runs?
How good we are. Yeah, and the things that the electric department did back when the demand went through the roof during that one particular event. Was spot on what they needed to do. And once I took him around and showed him the potentials, the clientele that comes here. A holiday, you know, sub zero weather. I don't think he grasped that too well until I took him and showed him houses that, he said, this looks like a hotel. I said, these are all hotels. I said, yeah, and on certain days they're full. And on one certain day, when it's negative seven, they were full and everything was on, you had that town wide. Thus the issue, he got a better grasp of what we were having to do. And when we started looking at the system further, he said, yeah, the things that y'all, Yogi and his crew did to overcome that was spot on. And he was looking at the amps pulled and we still have the readings from all the equipment on that. Anyway, he's got a pretty good idea of what to do. I'd recommend contracting with them to do that. He offered to get a head start on this study as of like now. And not bill us till after July, if y'all are somewhat agreeable to the concept. So that when July rolls around, he can have a product back to the board to present fairly quickly, you know, within a year. So that you can, when we're here doing this, this time next year, if there's anything we need to do, you got good information.
I don't have any problem with that. I think that's a good idea.
And, and I would also point out.
But he's not actually going to be doing the work. Well, the way that works, well, part of our staff will actually be putting this together for him to take July first. I'll let y'all figure that out.
And, and we've, we've had this conversation before that, you know, the state is now looking at the enterprise funds like the electric fund and so forth. And talking about how much you can allocate outside of that fund for other projects. This, all of this would be within improving the electric department in our system. So the reserve funds could be used pretty easily and with plenty to address these critical issues. Am I not right? There's no, we've got the money to start doing these studies. And it's appropriate according to the state that we invest in our, our system like this.
Well, this study will give you not exactly someone's opinion, but you know, scientifically what you need to be doing.
Yes.
The contract trimming, is that what we had a problem with in December limbs hitting the lines or what?
It's demand and strictly demand.
I'm sorry?
Demand overload and balance is a combination of several things, but limbs, as it turns out, is really not so much an issue.
Even, even with this last outage, at first we thought maybe it was our grid with limbs, but it actually, our, our grid held up, it was Duke's transmission system that had the problem.
That's correct. What I'm asking in contract trimming is additional money put towards trimming to do some of the, actually it's climbing in remote areas. Get some contract crews to come in.
So this isn't taking place of our trimming crew, this is just.
Additional.
Areas that, that they can't.
Not, they're not doing so well.
Yeah.
Yeah, they need some help climbing.
Three thousand dollars.
It doesn't go far.
I've ridden with Lamar and looked at some of those areas. And, you know, I've always assumed that we could drive a truck or get to every part of our grid without any problem. But there's some lines where if they were to go down, am I not right? You, you have to literally walk in, they're so remote to um, to do the repairs and things. Is that not correct?
Well, that's correct.
And that's what you're talking about here.
Everything in and get poles in, crossarms in, whatever material you need has to go by hand.
Yeah.
And it's critical to keep those areas trimmed very well.
Do we do this periodically?
It's been a while, but yes, it's been several years since we contracted any trim.
I just, gosh, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's been a while. We used to do some, but we haven't done it in a long time.
I know, but that was a long time ago. He was our original arborist.
Lamar, are you still, is this all a little electric, because I have another, just kind of a general down the road question.
It is.
When will we need to start planning, working with our consultant and everything about the contract that will expire with Duke, whether we renew with Duke or go with someone else? I've always been told we're, we need to start making those kind of plans as long as five years away from the end of that contract and we're getting close, am I not right?
Josh, you spoke with him briefly about that subject. Did you get any feel for that? No, our contract's through twenty-eight and so I think Kevin O'Donnell said, you know, two years ahead of time. You start too far in advance, you don't know what's going to be available.
Right.
Potentials, right now there's potentially a couple of avenues that they may drive up to the time, you know, our negotiation starts.
You mean like the Santee Nutella power plant that was going to almost give us the power? It was going to be so cheap.
Yeah, that was. That has changed.
Things change.
Quickly.
And the sanitation department would like to replace a two thousand thirteen rear loader. They have definitely went up the price, that is a rigid quote.
For how long?
Thirty days and I've got it.
I mean, is it on delivery? Because if it's two years from now, that won't be.
That's my estimate of what, he gave me a quote, then I got, you know, a couple of months ago. Then I've got to figure out what's the quote going to be July the first when we issue a pay up.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm at.
Okay.
Okay.
That is it.
Okay, any questions for Lamar?
Capital uh, improvement, do y'all have a copy of it, the CIP? Okay, if you need it, we can.
If you'll, if you'll get it for us.
It incorporates everything, here it is.
Okay, good.
It's everything that we've talked about plus projections of some of the other equipment and projects looking forward.
Okay. And, and basically what we're doing today with this first, um, you know, workshop. The needs being presented, we're saying, put it on the list unless we really think it's absolutely not necessary. But that doesn't mean that everything will stay on the list is, is our town manager actually develops the town budget, shares with us the real numbers. Then we have to maybe make some decisions about what stays and what can be done later. Okay, thank you Lamar, appreciate it. We are at the break time. So why don't we take a, a break?